All right, it's 6:30. I'll call to order the March 28th meeting of the Tarpon's Planning and Zoning Board. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yep.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuzkutis is out. Mr. Stavropoulos?
Mr. Vessi?
Here.
Ms. Veehill?
Yeah.
Mr. Koulionos?
Here.
Mr. Andy Otis?
Here.
All right. Can we have the quasi judicial announcement and the swearing of speakers, please?
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the Board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Done. Anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
That brings us to item number three, Application 22-04, for conditional use to allow for alternative dimension criteria for residential multifamily development in the residential multifamily zoning district. And we'll have the staff report, but also item number four has exactly the same words and just a different number. Can you start by explaining the difference between the two items?
Yes. There are very similar requests. There are two different properties. So they're the same request, they're slightly different projects, they're the same applicants, so we're going to present them separately, but it'll be some duplicate information. All right, we're all set. Okay, Ally Keane with the Planning and Zoning. There we go. Okay, so the first property is outlined here in yellow. It's located at the northeast corner of South Gross Avenue and East Boyer Street. It's located within the RM Residential Multifamily Zoning District. It's also immediately adjacent to the city's special area plan, which is the gray property shown here on the screen. The area as a whole is really a mixed use. There is a combination of both single family as well as small scale multifamily development, as well as some low intensity commercial uses. The applicants are here today requesting conditional use approval of an alternative dimensional plan, and this is for the purpose of constructing a six-unit multifamily apartment building on the property, and they are requesting modifications to the front, side, and rear yard setbacks. This is a look at the proposed site plan. The building is oriented towards the street at the corner with parking interior to the site and access from the alley, which is along the north of the property. Each unit is proposed to have access to not only the parking lot, but also to the public sidewalks and the streets out front. The site was also designed and considering the required site visibility triangles at the intersections and driveways, so that's why you see the building kind of jogged in different manners to accommodate those. And again, there's a total of six units for this project. The Land Development Code allows residential projects within the RM zoning district to request an alternative dimensional plan that allows certain zoning dimensional criteria to be modified. The intent behind this provision is to accommodate unique residential projects or projects that may be located on an unusual or difficult project site. To get approval of an alternative dimensional plan, the applicants are required to go through conditional use approval, specifically looking at compatibility. The code calls out scale, mass, intensity, size, height, style, and aesthetics, but also looks at preserving the character of the adjacent neighborhood or community. The table that is shown here on the screen outlines the relevant residential multifamily zoning district standards in comparison to what the applicants are proposing. The three items that are shaded in red are the three modifications. So specifically, they're looking to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to a minimum of zero feet. They're looking for a side yard setback, reduction from 20 feet down to just over two and a half feet, and a minimum rear yard setback, reduction from 20 feet to seven and a half feet. And these are all minimum requests. One thing to note is the maximum height that's allowed by right in the zoning district is 45 feet. The applicants are proposing to do a one-story development that's more in context with the surrounding neighborhood with a maximum height of 17 feet. So the reduced setbacks does allow for a smaller scale building, that one story, to be constructed as opposed to building a multi-story building that would be otherwise permitted. This is looking at the site plan again, just pointing out the different reductions and setbacks. One thing to note is if the application is approved tonight, the next step in the process is site plan approval. That's where the various other requirements of the Land Development Code will be verified. And with that, that's why we wanted to mention that the setbacks that they're requesting are minimums. Some of those may need to be increased to accommodate for other items that may come up during the site plan process as far as landscaping, parking, things like that. Zooming back out to the neighborhood, again, it's a mixed-use area. It is located within walking distance to the heart of downtown. It's about a block away from the Pinellas Trail. One thing to note is there are some vacant lots to the east and west of the site that are, will likely be developed in the future. One to call out is the one to the east is a smaller site that will likely be a single-family residential home. And I just have some Google Street View images to get you familiar with the area. Subject Properties over to the left on the screen. Across the street, there's an existing multifamily development. These are two-story structures. There's a series of, I believe, eight or nine smaller structures that are two stories. This is looking west Long Boyer, where you can see again the subject property over to the right with a single-story multifamily development and multifamily two-story on the other side of the street. This is looking north along Gross Avenue, where there's some existing low-intensity commercial uses, and these are fronting Lemon Street. And this is just looking south along Gross Avenue, one of the vacant lots across the street and the subject property on the left. When looking at your conditional use review criteria, as far as conformance of the Land Development Code, the alternative dimensional plan provision is intended to be utilized for unique residential projects that cannot conform to traditional zoning requirements. The proposed project does respond to the context of the neighborhood by utilizing a more urban layout, and staff does believe that it qualifies as a unique residential project. The site is located in a mixed-use area that has a combination of both single-family and multifamily residential and low-intensity commercial uses. The project does meet within the allowable density, and it will only be one story to be more contextually sensitive with the surrounding neighborhood. And by shifting the building closer to the street, it allows for parking to be screened by the building. It also allows for them to do a one-story development as opposed to a multi-story. The use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It's not located within an environmentally sensitive area or within a historic district. It is not expected to negatively impact surrounding property values, and it is served by existing public facilities and represents efficient and orderly development. With that, staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2022-08. We do have two conditions of approval for this that are recommended. The first is that the proposed setback shall be considered the minimum required and may be increased if necessary during the site plan process. And two, buffering of the parking lot from adjacent properties shall be addressed during the site plan process. And just to reiterate, staff does believe that this is a unique residential project that meets the overall intent of the alternative dimensional plan provision. We believe it represents context-sensitive infill that allows for additional housing units within the downtown while still being compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and it warrants the modifications to the RM zoning district standards. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Are there any other properties in the nearby, like adjacent blocks or anything like that, that have a zero setback on the front yard?
Sure. So... There are. So this is probably not the best example because this is a little bit different. You don't have the buffer of the grass, but this property here is a commercial use, and it is right at the property line. I don't know if I have a good picture of the other side. This over here, I don't believe is a zero-foot setback, but they are closer to the street, and this is a one-story multifamily development. And the last thing I'll point out too, so the zero foot, like I said, is a minimum to provide a little bit of flexibility during the site plan process, but on the current site plan, if I can get back to it, there is actually a slight setback that's proposed. So along Boyer Street, they are looking, the closest is at two and a quarter feet, so not significant, but there is a little bit of a setback from that property line and just over about two feet on Gross Avenue. And again, this is kind of the sidewalks here, so there's a little bit of buffer with the green space.
Okay. The... Can you go to one of, can you go to one of the slides, the one that has the two-story multifamily one across the street?
This one?
That one there, yeah. So what's, what is the setback on that property on, on the right? Do you have any idea?
I don't know the exact setback, but my assumption is that the property line is probably not far off the back of the sidewalk, but I don't have an exact dimension for you.
So what would be your guess? 10 feet?
I'd say somewhere between five, 10 feet. What do you think, Pat?
Let me ask you a question as a, just a theoretical question. What's the purpose of setbacks?
So setbacks for a zoning perspective is really how to regulate different intensity and scale of development. So typically, in a more downtown urban environment like we have here, you're going to have smaller setbacks. When you're out in a single-family residential neighborhood, like west of town, they're typically going to have larger setbacks because that's the context and the expected development style. So one thing I will say about the RM zoning district is even though it's multifamily zoning, it's not necessarily responsive to some of these smaller infill lots that we have in town that can accommodate 20, 25-foot setbacks. So not every zoning district can be perfectly placed with its location, but typically it's to control the density, I'm sorry, not density, the intensity of development.
But when the standard's set at 25, sorry, when the standard's set at 25, and I don't, I mean, you probably weren't around when standards were set up. I don't... Were these standards established just, I mean, were they the ideal standards for that community?
I would say for the RM, so Residential Multifamily Zoning District as a whole, typically you're picturing probably a larger development, more intense development, which maybe warrants larger setbacks. So unfortunately, with zoning, you don't always have like, you know, perfectly catered zoning districts to a property. So the larger setbacks, like I said, in this particular context is not as, it doesn't really work as well because there are smaller properties. One thing I'll also point out, like I had mentioned, the special area plan to the north of the site, this is an area where, you know, a lot of properties have zero setbacks, minimums or maximums. They tell you have to build on the property line, or they have five-foot setbacks. So it's a little more context-sensitive than the traditional zoning districts that we have on the outlying areas.
Do we have any renderings?
I don't have any renderings, no.
Do you know by any chance whether the developer considered doing like under drains or porous paving on the parking lot to reduce the size of the drainage pond in order to get the space that they need to come closer to complying with the setbacks?
So I would defer the applicants on why they went with that design, but I don't know. I don't know.
This is Pat. If I could just add a little bit more to what Ally said. When you're looking at that residential multifamily zoning, and if you, it refers back to the, what's called the Conditional Residential Mix District for its setbacks. This is a 90s code, and you'll see references to tallest building. Like Ally said, it's more intense, but it really is kind of a throwback to those taller, taller building, many-unit developments. Across the street, you've got the, I think it's the Housing Authority project that's two-story. This one is a one-story. They're trying to kind of, you know, of the two choices, whether it's unique or whether it's difficult, it's both, but I think it's, I think it's sort of unique in trying to fit and transition in that neighborhood. You've got Ty Guy's Industrial right, right catty corner on Lemon Street. You've got the Trophy Shop in front of it on Lemon Street. Those are both one-story and warehouse. And then you've got the Housing Authority two-story, one-story apartments. This is just six apartments. It's not a big multifamily, so it's trying to fit in. And I would just ask you to consider, this is not a, for lack of a better term, multi-story kind of high-rise, typical multifamily that this code originally envisioned and was written for, so.
I had a question. Thank you, Pat. That helped a lot, but you said something, I'll be honest, you said it so fast that I couldn't hear it all. It was a response to a question in reference to neighboring properties about the setback and what we might see. Could you repeat what you said about that?
Was it when I was talking about the special area plan?
Yes.
Okay, so this special area plan here is the gray. This is what's regulated by our SMART code, which I know you guys have seen some things in there, but it's kind of a unique set of zoning standards. But one thing that's pretty notable are, you know, minimum setbacks, like pretty small, zero feet in some cases. There's five-foot setbacks in some cases. So those zoning requirements are a little more aware of the location that they're applied to, whereas when you get out into these more conventional zoning districts, it's not as always as, you know, contextually sensitive. Does that help?
Kind of. So what I hear is right next door is a SAP that has zero setbacks.
Some districts. I'd have to verify exactly this one, but yes, most of them are zero to five to 10.
So although we may not see that all the time, and you do, is that right across the street, it would not be unusual for there to be zero setback because from my perspective and what I hear from my fellow board members is that we've never seen a zero setback on the front before.
Right.
And that gives us, hmm.
Correct.
But it is across the street in this very large gray zone that you're showing there is that
Right.
it at least is an option and something that's on the table over there.
Correct.
So in fact, although we, perhaps me sees it unusual, in this context, it's not unusual.
Right. And even looking in some of the areas that, you know, were developed several, several years ago when this originally was, was built, you'll see properties that have small setbacks, zero foot or five feet, that again, are smaller than what would be allowed today under the current zoning. But it's just, that's just how this area has developed in the past. So this is, in our opinion, when we were reviewing this application, by pushing the buildings closer to the street, we feel as if it's more contextually sensitive to that neighborhood. It's more in line with the urban layout and context, but yes, it's very different than what you typically have seen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To kind of go a little further than my original question about the surroundings, are there any residential properties in the area that have zero setbacks that were built in recent years, not older things that were grandfathered?
Off the top of my head, I don't know if there was something in the recent years that were developed. No. The best example, like I said, in the picture, that's not single-family, is that commercial property, which on this map, so here's your site here, the, this building here is zero foot. That's probably the best example, but again, that was also developed, I'm sure, in like the 50s.
That appears to be a very old commercial development that was built before any of the standards we have now.
Right.
In place. Any further questions, Jim?
The, now, is, is this proposed property going to be right at ground level, or is it going to be up?
I'd have to defer the applicant with that. I don't believe that they have any flood requirements that they have to meet here, so they're not necessarily required to elevate it, but I don't know if they're choosing to elevate it.
Well, I don't know, like flood area or something of that, along that line. I mean, I have, I would have less concern about a zero setback if we had a sense of the rendering. Let's, you know, if it's, if there's a, let's say, a porch and a stoop, well, that kind of lends itself to a zero setback, you know, i.e., you know, Brooklyn or something, right? Where you kind of walk out your door, you walk down some steps, and there you're right there on the, right on the sidewalk versus this built, this blue building where you open the door, you take one step, and you're on the sidewalk. There's a big difference.
Yeah, and it, it's not a porch and a stoop because their entries are on the other side.
Yeah.
But they do have an entry for each unit on the, to the street as well as the parking. So I would defer the applicant just to maybe explain how that transition works.
Yeah.
Any further questions for the staff?
I'd be curious to hear what George has to say. You've got, you're very much involved in historic properties and, and the looks and the setbacks of property. What do you, what's your take on this?
I agree with what the, the last comment you made. If there was some sort of buffer with the building, if it wasn't the sidewalk and this structure right there, even though it's residential, even though it's across the street and there is that building that was, you know, built like that, I would like to see something that would conform with, I think you had said earlier, it's not in the historical district. I mean, I guess that's a, that's an objective answer because I guess the historic district is defined, but... But living in Tarpon quite a few years, this is definitely a historic district. It's not, you know...
Not a mapped historic district.
Again, objectively versus subjectively. If you were to ask the citizens, they would say this is an older, you know, area of town. It's not Bay Shore Heights, it was built six or seven years ago. So, again, I would like to see a rendering and see, I wouldn't like it to be a sidewalk and then just some structure. And while I can appreciate the trying to hide the parking and, or at least, you know, conceal the parking and get the drainage and the pond and, you know, on the backside, you know, to me, I would feel better if there was some sort of concession with, you know, the setback on that front side. They're asking for a zero-foot minimum, but on the site plan or the alternative dimensional plan, it says 2.25 feet. And I'm guessing that's off of the sidewalk, right?
So that's from the property line. And I believe that the zero-foot minimum request was just to provide a little bit of flexibility when they do the final site plan, if they go through the conditional use approval process, to provide a little bit of flexibility if they need to, you know, the pond needs to be a different size or parking needs to be adjusted or landscaping or something like that, that was just for flexibility purposes. But right now, the site plan does show a long boyer for this one, it's 2.25 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
But on the other side, it's just 1.67 also.
You know, again, it just, just to me, it seems a little tight. Wondering how that would conform with everything else out there. And even though the special area plan is across the street, I mean, they're, again, going back to the objective versus objective, it's objectively in that area for a reason. And how far do you go away from the special area plan where you would make that, that exception? For instance, if this project was approved, would the property behind them say, "Well, the special area plan is one property over me," and then, you know, could that argument be, well, you can make any argument you want, but would it be, you know, reasonable?
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Approach the microphone, please, and state your name and address.
And I will have to swear you in before.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you're here, so if you could just raise your hand for me. Do you swear for the testimony you're about to give us, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn.
Thank you.
My name's Samer Gaffari, I'm the engineer of record on this project. And we are in agreement with the staff report and we are here to answer questions. We are providing what we could at this stage of the design, enough to provide a shrub plantation between the building and the sidewalk to create some kind of incontinuous concrete flat to wall, endless, to make, to create, to create the breakdown between the two, as well as the, there are at least, I can imagine, two or to three steps from the patio area in the back down to the sidewalk. And this patio is gonna be practically open, it looks like this is the front of the house, as well as we have access for each unit from the parking lot, so. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Did you consider the possibility of pervious paving or under drains to reduce the size of the drainage pond and pick up the space you need to come, come closer to complying with the setbacks?
The issue is that the lot is not wide enough and big enough to fit the units in the standard setup of parking and two building on, a building on either side of the parking lot. And we'll make it more of the, I call them the boarding setup. You've got a, I think a block from here this way or this way, I'm disoriented, been driving for three hours, where you can see similar development. The building comes hugging the street a little bit more and the sitting area is on the street, so there is a livelihood of urbanism there with very minimal landscaping and the parking lot and the car and the vehicle are hidden in the, in behind the buildings. And this is, this is the same concept that we are essentially implementing here.
So you didn't consider using under drains or pervious pavement to reduce the areas of the drainage so you could comply with the setbacks?
I did, sir. The, the size, the geometry of the lot itself doesn't allow for, what's left in here in the pond is what's left of the site. Taking this building and reorienting it in any different other shape or form wouldn't have allowed the number of the units to be built on site unless you're going multiple stories and we're trying to avoid that as you, where we have more of an aging population in the state. And I believe some of this could be for a transitory segment of the population that could be, where they could live here and with practically zero maintenance burden like they would be in a single-family home and similar setup. So the answer to your question, I did consider it, it just didn't work.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant?
I have another question for staff, I can wait.
I have a question with the applicant, first, I forgot your name.
Samer Gaffari.
Hi, Samer. First, I'd like to say thank you for proposing to you and your owners multifamily in Tarpon Springs because of course, we need a little bit more multifamily. So thank you for proposing it. Obviously, we're, I'm concerned about the zero setback on the fronts. And there's no renditions to show us how that might look from a street. And we all walk and bike those streets. And although it could be very urban, it might be a little bit off-putting also. So I, here's my question, I just wanted to set it up politely.
Appreciate it.
Is that, it just appears that if it was rotated 180 degrees and spun around and just put the parking lot out front with the pond that had grass in it all the time, the setback issue might be less aggressive. And although I appreciate your idea of hiding said parking, but it requires those very aggressive setback issues. So tell me what led you to, other than just desire to hide the parking lot? Because if it just goes, boop, it fits. And then you don't need a zero front setback on each of those streets. Unless I'm misunderstanding and I can't see or rotate that, but... So, so how did, I guess the question would be, how did you end up with a parking lot and the pond on the inside instead of just on the outside like everybody else does it?
The, what we did here, if you, if we do rotate 180, you're still gonna end up in issue with the setback along the alley. Had to be obtained and variate request for the alternative dimension requirements. Even if we do it on the north, that means we are at a zero setback from the alley. So the same issue would be, it's just the rotation of the building would be, would be different.
I might politely disagree.
From technical perspective, they will be the same. The question, the, and the staff could confirm that or correct me there. That the request would still come to you for a zero setback, but except on boyers, it will be on the, on the alley. Because that's still considered a public alleyway, access common easement and all of that.
Is, is there an underlying issue with access? Is, is there a restriction to be able to access the parking lot from either boyer or the adjacent street?
No, so to answer this, the hidden implementation, the hidden part or the implicit portion of the question, there is no technical issues or design issues if the southern building faces the alley rather than faces boyer. So reversing or mirror that, you still have, we would request for you to approve the same request, but we can rotate the building if staff is okay. The difference is that it's not usually set up where the front, see, that, that building is intended to be designed where what you see from boyer and what you see from Gross will be the front of the building. That's how it's set up to be.
I'm imagining it carefully right now.
Correct, it's, it's, it's why they're open on the road.
With those patios on the street, I am, you know that I am too, right? In a pleasant way, is that, you know, that's that very urban design. Boy, some elevations would be lovely right now.
Absolutely, but we, you can take a recess and we can walk outside and you'll see the elevation life in handy right here. I, I agree with you, we just couldn't get it in the, my schedule, couldn't get it in a timely fashion for, for the meeting. The idea, again, with, with the urbanism where the, the unit hugs the street, all the activities, is people walking the street, people are sitting on their front porch essentially and leaving the backyard in essence to the parking lot. So that's where the urbanism, people are interacting as they're walking or sitting in the, in the house versus when in a single-family home, we're all in our backyard and we get alerted now by, by Alexa that somebody is playing on the driveway.
Thank you.
It's a different philosophy, but it could be, it could be switched.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting such a thing, forgive me.
The application will still require an alternative standard for the setback, correct?
Yes, correct.
Because one elevation would still be within that zone.
Right, I'll just put the table up for you. So this column here, your required setback, so from the side and rear, you still have a 20-foot setback from the front, which your boyer and Gross is 25, but you still have a 20-foot from the side and rear. So they'd still have to get in modification to the setbacks even if they pushed it.
It's just a side and rear and not front.
Right, it's just, yeah, technical.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for the applicant? Did you have another question for staff, John?
No, it was just a, I appreciate, and thank you again for visiting Tarpon Springs. The frustration is that you're asking us for a zero setback. You're, you're describing a building, and so in our minds, I, we're imagining what it looks like, but it'd be so helpful if we had something in our, in our, in our packet, some kind of a rendering so we know what we're looking at. Because again, there's a difference between, you know, just a flat structure right on the sidewalk. I mean, the, the blue building there, that's not very, that's not ideal. And, and I think that, and this, this is kind of a, for staff, do you believe that, that a one-story structure with a zero setback is somehow more ideal than a two-story structure where we'd have, you know, a more reasonable setback? Let's say similar to what Kokolakis built here on, on Ring? Because he's, what kind of setbacks does he have? Again, I know I put you on the spot to ask you that.
Five, maybe 10, but I doubt it.
I know on the side, it's probably even less than five. And I believe that that's the project that they're referring to, is the one on Ring. But I would say, yeah, probably five, maybe 10 from the front.
Yeah, but on the, the front, I mean, there's, there's depth back there. I mean, by the time you walk in, you know, it's, it does have that urban feel, but there's, there's a buffer there between the sidewalk and the structure. Nothing is right on the sidewalk. Now, maybe on the side, that's a different story than the front. So it's, and I can't, I just don't, I can't envision what this, how appealing this would be.
Are these buildings gonna have any kind of front structure, like a porch or anything? Or is it just, I mean, I know you said the front door, but are they going to have like a porch where you could put two chairs or something along those lines like on Ring?
Yes, ma'am, I don't know if you can see the plan, these indentation in the, in each unit, that's an actual porch where the door is, is to the side of it. So every unit has a porch on the, on the main street. And, and a door to access the unit from it, obviously, get in, out of it. So the backyard is on the, it's the same as the front yard in this case. And I, I believe with the, with the, with the small buffer between the building, so you imagine it to the sidewalk, the sidewalk is not to the, to the property line. So the, the green area could reach, depends on the sidewalk location there, it could possibly even reach three feet of about green area where we believe between different shrubberies, different ground covers, you can break that and multiple different finishing on the building between textures and coloring, you can have a lot of variation that does not repeat itself and becomes boring to the eyes and, and, you know, having aggressive concrete attacking you. The idea is to have it more of the, the street and the sidewalk is the, is the, is the realm of, of living versus just an access point from A to B. There's, we have quite a way, the fourth time I've visited the site, there's quite a bit of pedestrian walking, not just going, they're going through the neighborhood to bigger roads, east-west and north-south. So it's, it's a, it's a lively and active neighborhood in terms of pedestrian and cyclists more so than, than vehicles. And, and that, this type of setup provide a better atmosphere for that.
Any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, do we have any communications, emails or letters?
No, we didn't receive any.
All right, in, in that case, I guess I would entertain a motion and then the commission can have discussion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to motion that we approve application number 22-04 for conditional use based on the submission that has been provided.
Do we have a second?
I just wanted to clarify the motion, is that with the conditions that staff has put in their staff report?
Yes, thank you for that clarification, yes, with the conditions that I don't think I read. Yes, with the conditions.
I'll second it.
Now that we're open for, forgive me for interrupting, for discussion, I want to, at that moment, share with you why I think that...
Can, can we do something, I was gonna try to do something just slightly different than we've done, more like the city commission does, and start and let each commissioner from that end say what they think about the situation before we vote, if that's okay.
And a point of order, your rules of procedure, I believe even as amended, state that you're not to share exactly why you are voting the way that you're voting. I'm not sure why that's in there, just letting you know it's there, and then, you know.
Taken, and I really like that idea, please and thank you. Taken, and I really like that idea, please and thank you. In regards to everyone being called and having an opportunity to, to speak.
Well, I guess, based on what our attorney says, we need to keep it general, I suppose, rather than terribly specific.
Thank you again for your time. I like the project, I, I believe I have the same concerns as the other board members and, you know, really wish we had a rendering to take a look at how, how this project would look from the street view. You know, that being said, I do appreciate your time and bringing it before us. And, you know, again, yeah, I can't say it enough, I wish I would have had something to, to see.
John? I'm just gonna reiterate the same. I wish I had a rendering. You're describing a lot of different things, textures and shrubbery and all kinds of things, but I, I'm not as imaginative enough to feel I understand it.
Yeah, and I would reiterate the same thing. There's not enough information here to give me the comfort level that I would need to have with granting a variance that basically takes 25 feet to zero feet. At any rate, you know, I, I would be much more comfortable seeing it reduced to some, some other number that's not zero.
As the person that put the motion forward, I absolutely share your concerns and thoughts. I was just able to get his mental telepathy about what he had envisioned and he sent it to me and I opened it and I was like, I can see it. Now, that's a little bit of humor, but it's also true. I share everyone's concern about the zero setback and frankly, it set me off, it's very unusual, but I was able to think through the process of their, in fact, it's not an unusual design, it's a very healthy design and it's just unusual for Tarpin Springs. And that's why we have some of the challenges that we have is that this is actually a very thoughtful design. Once that whole picture came up, I would agree with you that elevations would have made it much easier to see that. So I took a leap of faith based on what I thought was the genuineness of the presenter and of staff that they perhaps saw something. The single family, or excuse me, the, the single level height was right. The fact that we need good, solid infill development was right. I probably would even bring another hand to the chairperson who kept asking about pervious pavers in the parking lot area because they see the parking lot area as the backyard for this entire development, even though they can't label it as such. And therefore that pervious paver would maybe create a better backspace for them. And I think that the lack of the elevations did it kind of a disservice where they, you can't see the front porch or from that front and back entrance and how inviting that might be. It is a little bit risky. It, it's not something that we've done before, but I, I think that this is exactly maybe what we need more of perhaps, and therefore that's why I put that forward.
I personally can respect what you guys are doing here and I see a little bit more of the development, maybe my head is just more where I could see what's going on a little bit on it. I personally think that it's a great layout on it, I think that the front is gonna be enough of a porch and settings for everything. I love the idea of the back being the park, the parking area, just because I know how high of a foot traffic area this is. And one entrance in and out for cars instead of having six different entrances for cars to come in and out of might actually be life-saving, to say the least on that. So I appreciate everything that you have on here, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, if nobody has further comments, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Uh, no.
Mr. Polianos?
No.
Ms. Vehil?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
All right, that brings us to item number four, application 22-07, conditional use approval to allow for alternative dimensional criteria for residential multifamily development in the residential multifamily zoning district. Do we have a staff report?
So this is gonna be a very similar presentation to the last one, a very similar project as well. This site is just south of where we were looking previously, the, it's at the corner of Lime Street and South Gross Avenue, outlined here in yellow. Again, it's located in the residential multifamily zoning district and it's in an area that's really a mixture of both single-family and small-scale multifamily development. Again, the applicants are seeking conditional use approval to allow for an alternative dimensional plan. This is for the purpose of constructing a seven-unit apartment building at this location and they're also looking to reduce the front, side and rear yard setbacks. This is a look at the proposed site plan for this site, very similar to the last one that you saw where the building is oriented at the corner, close to the street with parking access from the alleyway behind the building. Again, the site plan does acknowledge the visibility triangles which are shown here in red, which is why it jogs back and forth. There's a total of seven units on this site, again, a one-story project. They have porches with access to the street as well as an access from the parking lot for each unit. Again, the alternative dimensional plan is intended to accommodate unique residential projects or properties that are, or projects that are located on unusual or difficult sites where the zoning dimensional criteria can be modified to accommodate. The setbacks that they're proposing, again, a minimum front yard setback of zero feet as opposed to 25 feet, a minimum side yard setback of 6.3 feet as opposed to 20 feet, and a minimum rear yard of five feet as opposed to 20 feet. Again, it's a one-story proposal at 17-foot in height where they would be allowed by right to go up to 45 feet. And that's just the site plan, just pointing out the different setbacks that they're proposing. Again, similar to the last request, they are requesting a minimum of zero foot from the front yard setback, but the site plan does show a one-foot setback along Lime Street at its closest point, which is just here and here, and then actually a four-foot setback from here. This is a little unique too because the public sidewalk actually slightly encroaches onto the subject property, so they wouldn't even be able to get to a full zero foot along Gross Avenue because the sidewalk kind of encroaches in that area. Neighborhood context is very much the same, it's about a block from the Pinellas Trail, walking distance to downtown. Again, it has a mixture, this is primarily residential in this area, but there's a mixture of single-family and multifamily development. Some images, the subject property is shown here in the front on the right. Behind it is a seven-unit cottage court, this is actually built back in the 50s. It's a series of five single-family structures with a duplex, all on the same property, and that's right adjacent to the west of the property. This is looking east along Lime Street, that same two-story multifamily development is over here. There's a single-family home across the street over in this area. This is looking north along Gross Avenue, subject property here. There's an existing single-story multifamily development on the other side of the alley. Again, there's that existing cottage court and then the two-story multifamily. And just one more image, looking south along Gross Avenue. And one thing we just wanted to point out is, again, if conditional use is approved for this project, they will have to go through the site plan process where everything is fully verified. They have acknowledged all of the site visibility triangles at the intersection and with the drives here, but there is an existing parking area for this cottage court that will verify that they do meet the visibility triangle, there's no issues. If there are, it wouldn't necessarily make this side any closer to the side property line, but it may increase or change the layout a little bit if there is a visibility issue. Criteria is very similar, the alternative dimensional provision is intended to be utilized to permit unique residential projects that typically cannot conform to traditional regulations. The proposed, proposed project does respond to the context of the neighborhood by utilizing a more urban layout. The site is within a mixed residential area with a combination of single-family and detached homes and small-scale multifamily. The project is within the allowable density and is going to only be one story and allows shifting the building closer to the street to screen the parking by the building. The use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, it is not located within an environmentally sensitive area nor a mapped historic district. It is not expected to negatively or adversely impact the surrounding property values and it is served by existing public facilities and does represent efficient orderly development. Staff does recommend approval of resolution 2022-09. We have three conditions of approval for this proposal. The first is the proposed setback shall be considered the minimum required and may be increased if necessary during the site plan process. Buffering of the parking lot from adjacent property shall be addressed during the site plan process. And during site plan approval, the site triangle, or site visibility triangle for the adjacent property to the west parking pad and the proposed apartment building shall be verified to comply with the Land Development Code requirements. Again, staff does believe that this is a unique residential project that meets the overall intent of the alternative dimensional plan provision. We believe that the project represents context-sensitive infill development and provides additional housing units within a downtown area that is compatible with its surrounding neighborhood. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Do we have any questions for the staff? I guess not. Would the applicant like to make any further comments?
Yes, I would. What you're being asked with this application is to recognize that the site is needed in the design to have variation and alternative standards to the setback requirements. Having said that, you, in lieu of giving it a rejection like you just voted before, I would like you to consider alternative numbers and push it into forward with approval. You could have, we can rotate this, this layout as Mr., I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses.
Vessi.
Vessi suggested, the units could have their frontage on the alleyway and on Gross Avenue and that would eliminate two of the issues that you all are having. Practically, we are providing four feet similar to the next, to the property next door where more landscaping could be provided. So what I'm asking you in this application is not to look at it a specific number, it's more of a leeway to allow the staff to approve something other than what's minimum, minimally required of 20 or 25.
Unfortunately, if I understand our situation, we don't really have the option to, to approve something that staff might decide to do later, right? For Erica?
So it's, it's not necessarily that, it's that rotating the project and substantially changing the, it substantially changes the analysis based on the criteria. So it's a substantial change in the project itself, which would then alter, the, the staff report would have to be redone, there'd have to be reanalysis based on the criteria for this particular conditional, well, it's not a conditional use, but conditional, well, conditional use approval or rejection.
Alternative standard.
Right, so at, at this point, you know, depending upon what the board recommends to the Board of Commissioners, you can either choose to go back and revamp your project and then come back before this board and then go to the Board of Commissioners, or you have the option just to take the recommendation and go to the Board of Commissioners and, and challenge your fate there to see what will happen. But at this point, the application as submitted to this board, that is what they're going to have to consider, not, not a substantial change in, in what you're proposing here.
So they, they couldn't go and say, if you, do you mind going back to the table, please? Minimum front setback to be, instead of proposed zero, to save five? Minimum side setback 2633, that's acceptable. Side setback on the other one's five and so just changing the proposed front setback to be five instead of zero.
Right, but you're.
Does it cha, doesn't change anything of the analysis that, that's the report has. It changes what we are proposing of variation for the dimension.
But the, the project that you're proposing then is altered because you're rotating the project on the site, is that correct? That's what, that's how you're getting the, the larger setbacks?
So the site, the, the site layout is not a PD that I'm forced to, to it.
Agree, I understand.
It's the variation on that, so even if I do change it for when actually we do the engineering and the architecture of the building, things will change as long as the, well, what we're asking is the variation on the setback.
Correct.
As long as we meet it, we can.
That, that is a hundred, that, right, that is a hundred percent correct because this is not a site plan review. So the site plan could substantially change between now and when it comes back anyways. So my question then would be to staff, if the project was changed, whatever you use to qualify your recommendation or your recommendation for denial or approval, based on the uniqueness and the difficulty in building on this particular parcel, is that going to change if they reduce their setbacks regardless of what the project ultimately looks like? Because some of the criteria that you're to consider is whether it is congruent with the surrounding area. So it's not just about reducing the setbacks.
I think that from a staff perspective, a reduction in the setbacks that are typically required for an RM zoning district, I think is warranted for this particular location and based on the site itself. I do think that the orientation of the site plays into that. I think that that's how the compatibility of the neighborhood comes into play as opposed to having parking right off the street and things like that, that was taken into consideration by screening the parking, access off the alley, we thought it was more compatible, so that did go into our recommendation. But as far as adjustments of like a zero-foot front setback to a five-foot setback, I think that, that's still in line with our analysis.
Yeah, I'd like to add, so remember the, the condition on this one, like the last one was that, that they were asking for the zero, but it could be bigger, so that would be the, the most, closest they could get. Let's say you give the five on the front, but you keep the other two, if for some reason they can't achieve a layout without getting closer on those other two, it would, it would have to come back. In other words, that, that would be their limit, so, you know, the engineer's up here saying that he can do that, when he goes to the drafting board, I'm assuming he can, but you never know until you see the layout. But yeah, if, if you did say a five foot on front and then I guess you'd leave the other two like they are, I'm not sure if that's what you're asking for.
Like get five foot all the way?
Right, so, but my recommendation to the board would be because, because one of the criteria is, and based on Ally's representations, because one of the criteria is the proposed use is appropriate to the property in question and compatible with the areas and some of the things that she took into consideration in making the recommendation or the analysis were the parking where it was and, and the orientation of the property on the site, I would say that at this point, that type of amendment to the application would be substantial enough from an analysis point of view that it would be, have to be something that you would take back and bring back to this board, it's not something you could do on the fly this evening, specifically because of the criteria.
Chairman? I, I can only speak for myself, we had a three to two vote here. And I, again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the, the other two no votes. I was like this close, okay, I liked the project. Personally, I liked the project and I'm not sure you need to change anything. If I was gonna make any comment about your presentation is we don't have a rendering. We, it's something that's very unique to the, to that area, we don't have any other properties other than that blue building that's on the sidewalk, which isn't very appealing, but it doesn't mean that your project's not appealing. Again, I'm this close, I like the project. I don't, I'm not voting, I didn't vote no because I don't want that project, I think it's ideal for the area, I like the back parking, I like the whole concept. And no offense to my, my friend over there, but I- And no offense to my friend over there, but I wouldn't flip it, I think it's better the way you have it. It's just that, right on the sidewalk, I want to know what it looks like, I don't have a sense of it. So, and again, I'm not giving you advice as to what to do, but if it came back and I personally saw it and I liked it, I would have voted yes. I was, again, I was this close to voting yes. So for you to go and change, go and change all your work and do all that, I don't, again, I can't give you advice on that, but I'm telling you where I was coming from, I'm this close, I just can't, I need to see it, and it's very important. Our town has, what, less than 10% left to build out. We're 90% built out in Tarpon Springs. So everything we do is very critical, it's important. And so that's why, and we, this board is a very serious board and we take it very serious. But again, I, the two yes votes you got, I think those were well warranted. And again, I'm that close, show me something. That's all I'm saying. And if I liked it, I think I would, if I had have seen something, I might have voted yes. That's how close I was. So I'm just giving you my two bits.
I would agree with Mr. Kulianos, but I would also add, in my case, I have a hard time granting a 100% variance on the setback, I really do. I think, you know, depending on what it actually looks like, I could probably be happy with the five-foot thing, but I would want to see what it looks like more importantly than anything else. And if it didn't have five foot and I liked what it looked like, I probably could live with that. But without anything to see-
Don't give up on us.
Without anything to see, it's hard to approve.
Based on that, can we table it for the next meeting where we can have some elevations? And if so, is it too late to reapply?
Yeah, you have the right to continue the application, you can make amendments to it as long as the amendments that you're making are not going to change what was advertised for public hearings. So that would be the only concern that I would have, is that we can certainly continue it to a date certain, to the next meeting, or whenever you so choose, to preserve the advertising. However, if the project changes substantially that the advertising would change, then you would have to just withdraw the application and then have it re-noticed. But that is up to you as the applicant to make that determination.
We would like to table it through the next meeting.
Okay, so then we can continue it to a date certain, when is our?
April 18.
April 18th, so it would be 6:30 PM on April 18th.
And is it too late to do the same for the previous one that was voted on?
Yes, because that one, there has already been a vote on.
Okay, so is that, that's a new application?
That would either be a new application, or you can choose to move that one forward to the Board of Commissioners and see how you fare with them. It's up to you. Again, I leave, I can't make the decision for you. You can certainly speak with staff about that and see what their recommendation is, I just can't advise you on that.
I think, I might be speaking out of turn, but it wouldn't be the first time. I would think that a 5-0 vote on the second project and a 3-2 no vote on the other would look favorable to the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you not to consider that.
Yeah, but I, yeah, once again, I look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
I'm going to ask a rhetorical question just so I can, I would very much like to see rendition so that what I got from you, they can see also. And if I might add, Mr. Kulianos, you continue to impress me with your thoughtfulness, and in fact, I was thinking exactly the same things, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
You see, he's a contractor, I'm an accountant. I have no vision, he can see things, so you got to show me some, all right? But we look forward, we look forward to seeing you again.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Absolutely.
If I could add just one thing, and my apologies, I know you were wrapping it up. Mr. Kulianos brought up that he would like to see the renderings, and earlier in the meeting, you had brought up that, you know, if we could take a little break, go outside and see a building down Ring Avenue, and I know, I'm fairly certain that you were referencing Mr. Kokolakis's, which should have been to the south.
I think it's this direction.
South, well, yeah.
It'd be east.
I think it's-
It's towards the 19 or?
That's south.
It was right.
On Ring, yeah.
I pointed wrong, but I said, I said the right direction, right, south. I think that'd be a prime example for us, and I think we asked staff, and they said it's somewhere, I think Pat answered, somewhere between five and 10 feet off of the sidewalk, I believe. And to me, it's nice to see it, obviously the project has been approved, it's been built, so you get to see the actual project, but in listening to your presentation with a zero setback, I can't imagine approving a project with any less than Mr. Kokolakis's project, which is somewhere between five and 10 feet. In my opinion, that is very close to the sidewalk and probably as narrow of something that I would think would be the norm. And again, I'm speaking just for myself for the look. It appears, and you get the feel when you drive, which would be north on Spring, and you saw it on the west side, that anything closer than that, that is very close to the sidewalk, but you get to see the dimension, and we do, I love those buildings, but it would be hard for me, again, personally, and I'm not speaking for the other four members here today, to see anything closer than that. And I will agree with going from 25 to zero, that's kind of, I mean, that's like a grand slam in the bottom of the ninth, and it's kind of difficult for us to approve.
I totally understand what the site plan may have failed in explaining without even the rendering, that the building is not a box that's going vertically right at the sidewalk. Even as it stands here showing where the porch and the entrance, the bedroom, there will be indentation where the window is to create a closet from one end, and then the building is going back and forth, generating higher areas in between for landscaping and breakdown with different rendering and finishing on the exterior of the building. So that, even the site plan didn't show you what was the vision, it was just to establish number of units, it was more of a zoning plan, not, wasn't as architecture at the time, but the setup in, at least in my head, is that. And hopefully the next time I'll show you something that you'll say, uh huh.
We truly appreciate your time.
Yeah.
And explaining everything to us, and I agree with Mr. Kulianos, some of us are more visual than others, and we can, you know, project that visualization on something. I'm not one of those people, apparently, admittedly, Mr. Kulianos is not either. Mr. Vessi got his inner, you know, feelings from you, but unfortunately, we didn't get them. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, and we look forward to seeing you back with the revised plan.
Yes, sir.
Yep, very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number five, the staff presentation, the final in-board training session.
Thank you.
I'm going to step away for just a minute, but I'll be right back.
Okay, I will be quick. So remember, we had two kind of modules of training, we had a last, final one that we were going to do. So that's what this is. And I can't remember who all was on the board, but this was just kind of fill in, when you all get on the board, you go over to the clerk and they give you some things to read. I think you have to watch a video about the quasi-judicial and sunshine and all that. But you really don't get anything about what planning and zoning does, what about the code, what's the context, till you get thrown into your first meeting and you start having to try to figure it out. So that was the purpose of putting this training together. We've had two modules already, and so we'll finish it up tonight, and we had a session on Florida Growth Management Frameworks, so you know where our comprehensive plan came from, our Land Development Code, kind of the context for that, and also our Form-Based Code, we touched on that. The second module, we got into the Planning and Zoning Board being the local planning agency and your duties and all the applications you look at. So tonight, we're going to look at just a little bit from the applicant's perspective and also a couple of slides on the regional framework for what you do. So just going through as an applicant, as you guys know, and a lot of this, you already know from what you've seen, we get the whole range of applicants from, you know, layperson to professionals, so homeowner, business owner, contractors, engineers, architects, all that. They may need to take their project to more than one board, these are the three other boards they usually see, depending on what they're proposing. And their first stop is the Technical Review Committee. That is a committee of departments, city department professionals that sit as a group, they meet once a month. As we've discussed, the agenda is posted about a week ahead of the meeting, so you can kind of see what they're, what's coming to the TRC and get an idea of what's going on in the city, what's being proposed, and a little bit of a heads-up on what may eventually come before you as far as projects. The TRC meeting is really sort of an informal exchange between the applicant and the city, so we're going to tell them about the code, we're going to ask them about their project. They, it's open for them to ask questions of us, we try to help them with any issues they have, code issues, I would say in addition to Land Development Code that you all deal with the most, fire codes and building codes, a lot of times take up a lot of discussion in TRC. We will give them a heads-up on issues that this board and Board of Commissioners brings up on landscaping, or hey, if you're doing a short-term rental, you know, Planning and Zoning Board's going to want to know how many bedrooms, you know? Not in the code, but we try to give them those heads-ups. So it's a good process, TRC is a good meeting for most applicants. And I've listed in the notes, I gave you a handout with all the notes of all the modules of who sits on the TRC, so that list is there for you. The Planning and Zoning staff will compile those comments, and basically, we decide whether an application is ready for hearing. So TRC doesn't really make a recommendation, the only thing they completely review is minor site plans, what are called minor site plans, which are very small additions to an existing site or building. Other than that, they don't make recommendations or vote or anything like that. They express concerns, they note deficiencies, all those things. Sometimes, as you know, those become conditions. Sometimes the applicant has to revise before it can come to you their plan. And as you've also seen, there are times when an applicant says, you know, for lack of a better term, I don't want to comply with that, I don't feel like I need to comply with that, I want to go to hearing. And so there's no rule that says that, you know, it has to comply with code to go to hearing, right? It's kind of, everybody gets their day in court, so if they want to go, present it to, they present it to staff, if there's an impasse on an issue, they're certainly allowed to come before this board and Board of Commissioners to see, you know, hey, can I get it, go ahead and present it to the board. So that comes to hearing, and just a little note, we now have electronic plan review, which is the best thing ever. Tarpen has really joined like the last century, okay? So I just love the electronic plan review.
Do you take electronic payment yet?
No!
I know!
I know.
No electronic payment?
You can work on the clerk for that.
Those pesky debit cards.
Right. Okay, so this is just a quick slide, I'm not going to go through it, but just a general overview of kind of a thought process behind a review. So yeah, we do review for compliance with code. Any of you that have looked at the code know that over the years, as it gets amended, there's something that covers one piece of subject matter in three different places, it's kind of all over the map. This isn't complete, but this kind of gives you an idea like the thought process. We kind of start at the 30,000 feet, you know, what is being proposed, what's the area like, what's the density in land used, and then obviously comprehensive plan, then we start to drill down into things that really affect the layout of the development. So, you know, and we get into issues with compatibility and the characteristics of the use and all those things we've talked about. So after TRC, the applicant proceeds to Planning and Zoning Board for those applications that come to you, and I kind of listed on your notes, just a reminder of those applications you see under the current code, that's your list. And we usually, the professional planning staff usually makes a recommendation, not always, and that's based on compliance with the code and the comprehensive plan and coordination with the TRC and their comments primarily. The applicant does receive the staff report ahead of the meeting, so they get to see what we've recommended, you know, all the items in the staff report so they can prepare for the hearing. And then, as you know, the Planning and Zoning Board makes a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for all the project types that you see. Approvals are in two forms, resolutions and ordinances. You can see resolutions, of course, are for conditional use, site plans and development agreements, and ordinances are for all other applications. Ordinances are required by state law, of course, to be adopted by the Board of Commissioners, which is the governing body of the city. Here in Tarpen, we hold, the Board of Commissioners holds one hearing for a resolution and two hearings for an ordinance. And then, once an application or a project is approved, the applicant goes to building permit, or they pull a local business tax receipt for something, for example, a use in an existing building. And that's, that is where staff verifies compliance with all the conditions. One nice thing in the electronic plan is I can take the site plan you all said was good, take the one that comes in for building permit, overlay them, and in 10 minutes, I can tell you everything that matches or doesn't match. That took hours before now, so that's what we do, we verify compliance with the approved site plan. This you can't read, but I've given you a handout, and I think I emailed this to you as well. This is just a nice graphic that actually Ally produced that shows the approvals, shows the other board, Board of Adjustment, Heritage Board, Public Art, all the stuff we do administratively just to show you who all is reviewing and why. Just wanted to give you a couple examples of two places where I worked as a staff member in just for their local planning agencies frameworks. Ever since Growth Management passed and everybody had a local planning commission, some already had them, but everybody had to get a local planning agency. You know, they, a lot of them kind of started out pretty similarly functioning, but over the years jurisdictions change how they do things and they kind of, you know, it's kind of an ebb and flow of how they use their local planning agency. At my last job, Hernando County, they select their planning commission pretty similar to Tarpen, they have an application and you're supposed to attach your bio and your resume and all that, whatever you've got. They take those to the Board of County- They take those to the Board of County Commissioners and they select people to serve on the Planning Commission. That board has final approval of conditional uses and what are called special exceptions, some codes have special exceptions, which is a list of things allowed in any zoning by special exception, like hospitals or utility transfer yards, things like that usually. And then, on land use rezoning and plan developments, the Planning Commission holds the first public hearing, and the governing body holds the second public hearing and adopts, makes the decision and adopts the ordinance. Interestingly, in Hernando, the governing body can by statute designate themselves as the LPA, that's what Hernando did. But it's kind of, it's just kind of interesting the way they're operating, because they're still splitting the hearings, so. Not exactly sure how they're doing that, but they moved LPA from their Planning Commission to themselves at some point, so that gives you an idea of some of the changes that take place over the years. In Monroe County, prospective members of the Planning Commission are brought to the governing body by an individual commissioner. So when there's an election, new commissioner comes in, they ask, you know, they have somebody they would like to be on, that they ask, and they bring that person to the board. So, for lack of a better term, it's kind of a political appointee type, type of board. And in my experience, working seven years directly for them and then as a consultant for years after, it, it was some, and I will tell you, Monroe County, very land use litigation active, very active at that time, this was in the 90s. So that board was very careful and, and very good board, very kind of trained, very, you know, trained in the process, because every other application we got was a land use lawyer representing the applicant, so they got, they got kind of an intense experience, but, so, so you know, that, that was a board, those boards were good boards, they were very careful with their findings and that, because of that atmosphere. But again, they were in close contact with their appointing commissioner, and, and they tended to, you know, kind of, kind of see, you know, have a viewpoint that, that kind of lent itself to that commissioner. They had final approval of conditional uses, Platts, and they heard appeals and variances. I did look and saw that now in their code, the Planning Director issues variances and the Planning Commission simply reviews them on appeal, if someone appeals the decision. And then, they hold the first public hearing on land use rezoning and plan development. At both of these jurisdictions, site plans for uses by right are reviewed at the staff level, they don't go to any boards unless they're appealed. In Hernando, the appeal is to the Board of County Commissioners, in Monroe, to the Planning Commission. And neither one deals with development agreements, they defer to state law, we, we have a whole article in her code for land, for development agreements, neither of them do, they just rely on state law. And I just made a note that you're supposed to have a local school district appointee by statute, and they do, kind of on and off. Remember, we talked about the Growth Management Act being changed to Community Planning Act under Rick Scott? One of the things I've observed since then, 2011, is that the state is not as enthusiastic about, they do not enforce 163 like they used to, let's put it that way. If it were put to an issue, they probably would, but they do not, yeah, take the initiative to do it these days. That's just an opinion, I don't know if Erica would agree with that, but that's my observation. So let's go out to the regional and state context. The city does operate also under the countywide plan. The countywide plan is promulgated by Forward Pinellas. Some of you might remember Pinellas County Council, I think it was called, or...
The Pinellas Planning Council.
Planning Council, is now Forward Pinellas. And that is a 13-member board, made up of the county, county representatives, county commissioners, city commissioners, and the PSDA, the Transit Authority. We are represent, our seat represents three cities, Safety Harbor, Dunedin, and Tarpon Springs. In fact, at the next, well, not the next commission meeting, but the April 26 meeting, they will make, it's our turn to be on Forward Pinellas Board to serve, I'm not sure how, how long, whether it's a year, but they'll appoint one of the commissioners to serve on that board at that meeting. So they prepare rules and a map, we all have to be consistent with that map. So they coordinate the land use actions of all the cities, I want to say there's 23 or 26 cities, something like that, you guys might know, and the unincorporated area. Unincorporated Pinellas County has their own plan, comprehensive plan, and they are subject to the countywide plan, the same as the rest of us. The county comp plan is called Plan Pinellas, that plan has no jurisdiction over us, nothing to do, to do really with us. They are another comp plan that has, that's under that umbrella of countywide plan, we all have to be consistent with that countywide plan and rules. Forward Pinellas also, really, they primarily serve, or were kind of, I think, created to be the metropolitan planning organization of the county. The MPO is something that's required by federal law, we're required to have a long-range transportation plan, they update it every four years, it's called, they call it Advantage Pinellas, if you go on their website, which I'll give you in a minute. That's their, that's how we get federal transportation dollars, is because we have an MPO. All the, everybody in the state pretty much is, is, you know, all the higher population areas have to have an MPO. So Forward Pinellas serves a purpose, and again, Department of Economic Opportunity is the one that administers the Growth Management Act, well, the Growth Management, which is now called the Community Planning Act, and they do coordinate the review of the local amendments. So when we amend our future land use map, or like the property rights element that just went up, we have to send it to them for review, it's usually an expedited 30-day The only other thing I'll mention, I've been forwarding you guys the Florida Association, American Planning Association, updates on the legislative session, it's over, and there's two things that I observed that probably affect us most with the state, that the state does, one is tolling development orders. They, they haven't, well, I was going to say they haven't done it recently, but, but they have because of COVID, but, but they, there for a while, they were toll happy, I would say. The downturn was, was a big reason to toll development orders for four, five, six years. And by tolling, that means if somebody was supposed to start building on this date, guess what, you've got four years and, and, you know, that date is pushed four years out. So, between emergencies and economic downturns or whatever reasons, the state will sometimes tend to keep development orders alive. And a development order, remember, is any action that, any kind of development approval, site plan, conditional use, building permit, those are all kind of lumped in as development orders by state statute. So, there's tolling, and then there's what I call tinkering with the comp plan and the land development regulations. And by that, I mean, we've seen a lot of the preemption stuff, right? This time, we didn't, we had a couple bills introduced to backtrack and revoke the preemption. Short-term rentals and the, those of you that are aware of the tree, you know, where you can cut down residential trees with an arborist report, but neither of those bills made it anywhere. Instead, we had a couple of what I call glitch bills, where they were trying to fix something they already preempted, neither of those, I don't think fixed anything, that's my opinion again, but that, that's what they end up doing, they'll pass something, and then they'll find out the issues with it, which usually just creates mostly local issues, and they'll try to fix it. But, you know, we do have some things that have come in about development, about, you know, what, what you can, can permit, where, a couple, a couple of bills that have passed, and I won't, we won't get into those, but, but they do like to kind of put that umbrella over us and, and see if they can do things that way. Here are some links to Forward Pinellas, countywide rules, the countywide map that we have to comply with, and a long-range transportation plan. You were talking about special topics, at some point, if you all want some special topics, we can bring some back on issues you're dealing with, you can just let us know. We could, you know, let me know if you want to do something on short-term rentals still, we can do that, there was some, some stuff passed this session, I'm assuming the governor will sign it, it's not much, things like you can't regulate Airbnb's website, you know, stuff like that, which, that we probably didn't contemplate doing anyway, but nothing real earth-shattering, and any other topics that you would like to see. And so, I would like to thank you for being patient and going through this with me. I really want you guys, you know, you guys are the local planning agency, I want you to be encouraged and be able to find these things you want to know and, and kind of get the context for all this. I would like to use this for new members, I believe, I believe you're going to have a, oh, item on the Board of Commissioners' agenda for April 26, to select at least one new member, we're short one, right? Or maybe we're short two. So, we'll do that. And so, what I'd like to do is kind of give this to the new members for orientation, keep adapting it, keep, you know, whatever suggestions you guys have for what you want to know, or, and of course, we'll update it as code changes and procedure changes that you guys adopt happen, we'll obviously update this, but hopefully that helps, and it'll give something more than just the sunshine and quasi-judicial that, that you get at a clerk's office, so. Any questions?
I'd just like to really thank you for putting this together for us, and I'd like to reiterate that, that new members should go through it and, and preferably, if there's any way to accommodate it, go through it even before they sit for the first meeting here, so, so we do have people coming in, being, being aware of, of some of the intricacies of, of what we are allowed to do and not allowed to do and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you, it's very nice.
Okay.
Very helpful.
You're welcome, thank you.
Pat, I had a question, a clarification.
Okay.
You were referencing the, this is City of Tarpon Springs opportunity to have someone on the Forward Pinellas?
Yeah, our, that, that seat that represents the three cities is, is rotating to Tarpon Springs, and it's a, it's got to be a commissioner.
It has to be a BOC commissioner? Of course, we have four new BOC.
Yeah, they'll all be new when they get voted in, when it comes up, it's going to be on their next one, not this 12th, but the one after.
Yeah. And so they all...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, I'm going to do, I'm going to be a little, I don't know if you want to call it facetious or something, it wouldn't be someone from the LPA board?
It's got to be an elected official.
Wouldn't be someone that has been getting an education in, in, in Growth Management or Comprehensive Plan, it has to be someone that is a Board of Commissioner.
Yeah, it's required, it's required to...
Don't go making sense over there.
It's required to be an elected official, yeah, from whichever one.
Because, of course, I was going to ask that our chairperson, Merle, seem to represent City of Tarpon Springs at the county level.
If he wants to run for office next go around, you know, the opportunity is there.
I'll add my thanks to the presentation, I really appreciate it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The, okay, so, in, there are, the Board of Commissioners has to hear anything, we can't do, they have, it has to go to them if it's a legislative, right? Like, there's certain things that they could yield, there are certain things that, that the Board of Commissioners could yield to us, right, that, the things that aren't legislative, correct? Like...
Well, if you're talking about changing the code, they could certainly look at the code, I don't know, Erica, if you want to answer that.
So, we've had this discussion before.
Yeah.
Under the current iteration of the code, no, because you are an advisory board and they are the commission. If you, and, but it's not necessarily legislative versus quasi-judicial, because you guys also hear legislative things, you know, you are the LPA, you are the board that is responsible for making recommendations to changes to the code, to the land development code. If you look at your enabling ordinance that tells you what your powers and duties are, that's one of the things that you have the ability to do. It's community by community, in some communities, the LPA, like Pat said, is actually the commission, that's very rare. A lot of communities, it's, the LPA is a board that has the ability to make final decisions, and some of those, those types of the site plan reviews, a lot of times will go to the LPA. Sometimes site reviews don't go to the LPA at all, sometimes they stay at the staff level. So it really depends on how the legislative body of your community wants to change the law, and what powers and authorities they want to give to the, the Planning and Zoning Board sitting as the LPA for the City of Tarpon Springs.
Well, and we have a workshop meeting scheduled in early May sometime, I don't remember the exact date, but I think everybody's been contacted about it, and, and that is one among many things that, that we are going to discuss with the interest of ultimately bringing something to request that the BOC consider making some changes in, in our code to, to resolve some issues we've had and, and to address that kind of thing. And if, if we haven't talked to Erica about that already, we would want her to attend that.
No, no, I, I am attending it, but I have some concerns about what exactly is happening at this workshop. One, your ordinance does not allow for you to have workshop meetings at all. Second, if there is going to be a workshop, which it's now scheduled, there needs to be an agenda, so that...
And we've talked about that, I thought, Mr. Seaman, you're going to provide me with the draft agenda?
Yeah.
Which, which we will...
Also, which is, make sure if there's a draft agenda and it's things that the board wants to see on the agenda, not just the chair, you guys cannot have those discussions outside of the sunshine. So if you're trying to set an agenda and you want to do so as a board, it needs to be done at a public meeting.
Like now?
Or, you could do it on April 18th. I think we'd have sufficient time, we just need time to also review it.
Right.
So we're sure it's within the bounds of...
Should be properly agendaded, saying, agenda items for the workshop meeting, it should be, there should be a proper agenda with an agenda item that says, you know, discussion of workshop meeting agenda items and that way.
We could certainly add it to the next meeting, if you...
Yeah.
Who's calling for this workshop, the Board of Commissioners or us?
I mean, I, I was the one that brought it up based on discussions that we'd all had in, you know, at the end of some of these meetings, the feeling was that we needed to, to look at addressing some issues in the code and, and, and other things, and I, I felt like at least it would be more productive to do it around a conference table than in this setting.
I agree, I think.
I, I actually suggested that we meet at Johnny's Tap House, but someone said that it must be publicly noticed.
Well, you can have it at Johnny's Tap House, it just has to be publicly noticed.
Well, there we are.
I mean, it's a little inappropriate, but still, I'm not the one that's at decision.
Although, although since we're not, it's such a nice meeting, although since we're not even supposed to be having a workshop, better that we have...
not even supposed to be having a workshop, better that we have it at the conference room. Um, but you did bring up a, watch this word, a very salient point, that we are in fact not supposed to have a workshop. It's just not written, currently written in.
You, you don't really have the ability to have a workshop meeting. The, the way that your powers and duties flesh out, you, you don't really have that ability. Um, again, whether or not we do it or not, whether or not you have the ability to do it or not, you, you know, the other thing about a workshop is you're not allowed to actually take any action. It's just discussion. There's no votes, there's nothing. So, um, there's usually also not public participation. It's a publicly noticed meeting, but it's just a discussion among the board members. Public comment is not part of a workshop. Um, so, you know, workshops are typically held only by, usually by the legislative body of the community, because, again, sunshine law, you have to have an opportunity to discuss things in public. Um, so, that, that's typically what it's reserved for. But at this point, it's been scheduled, so I will be there.
Well, I think this is a...
I just, I think that it's important, one, that we have a, that there be an agenda and that the agenda topics be things that, one, the act, the board can actually, uh, have some sort of, uh, effect on. Meaning, you get your agenda items, and if they're pie in the sky, like we want to be able to make laws in the City of Tarpon Springs, well, you can discuss that, that's sure, but that's something that you're not going to be able to do, right? That you don't have the ability to do it. Or you want to be able to say, no more meetings at City Hall, let's go, I'll have them at Johnny's. You know? You can discuss it, but again, I, I think it needs to be tailored to what your main concerns are. Um, and I think maybe if we can do it at the next meeting and have a discussion item about what you'd like to see on the agenda for the workshop, I think that gives you time to think about it from now until then, and everybody can kind of come up with ideas. Um, and I would suggest that you take a look at your enabling ordinance within the code of ordinances to see what it is that this board actually functions as, and if something in there you'd like to see changed that you want to bring to the commissions, you know?
Yeah.
Forefront, you can, but, you know, remember, that, that can only be done really through staff or one person showing, I mean, you can't even really have one person show up at a meeting and give a report, because, you know, there's also some sunshine issues there too. So, we'll, we'll figure it out. Um, it's, it's not, it's not typical, but we'll figure it out.
And the workshop is scheduled for Monday, May 9th, in the media room upstairs, uh, at 6:30, so, um...
Should we ask the other commissioners to, to get their ideas for agendas, items into staff prior to the next meeting? Or should we just talk about it at the next meeting? What's the...
You mean the board members on this board?
Yes.
Oh, I leave that to staff.
We can, but you can do that, and we could certainly put it into backup on, on the 18th then.
Okay.
Yeah, depending upon how long the meeting will go, you can whittle it down to maybe your top five or 10 or whatever, however many items you think you can accomplish during that time period.
Yeah, that, that would give us a little bit of a head start.
Yeah, you'd have it ahead of time. Okay. So, I will email you...
So, because I'm a little slow, forgive me, Pat. Because I'm a little slow, we're organizing a meeting, meeting that technically we're not supposed to have, and we're creating an agenda for a meeting we're not supposed to have, but we can't discuss the agenda amongst ourselves. We have to submit it secretly to staff that will be presented...
So, you're, you're submitting individual ideas for an agenda to staff. Staff is going to compile all that and put it in your packet.
For the next meeting.
For the 18th. You'll have it a week at a time. You can see what everybody, everybody plus the public can see what everybody's suggested. You're going to come here and whittle it down to what you really want. That will be your discussion.
And does that allow enough time for public notice of that agenda of the meeting of May 9th, of a meeting that's occurring in late April?
What I will do is email you with a deadline to get me the, your lists.
Okay, and if I...
I'll do that tomorrow.
If no one minds me asking one more question, because it appears that our council, um, if we agreed perhaps just in conversation that it's healthy for there to be adjustments made to how we operate as the LPA, or we'll just say the LPA, and I think there's unanimous agreement that maybe we need a tune-up, would, would have been the ideal process so that the LPA can be healthy and make normal and consistent changes as the environment is changing outside of us? Does that make sense?
No, but I'll go ahead and whittle it down to what I think you mean.
Okay.
You, you are the planning and zoning board for the City of Tarpon Springs, and you sit as the city's LPA. One of your powers and duties is to make changes to the land development code. Your enabling ordinance is embedded within the land development code. So, you have the ability to review that ordinance and make suggestions to the Board of Commissioners as to what you can change. How typically that's done in this board, we never had a workshop the entire time I've been here, in fact, I'm not even going to get into that whole other mess. Anyway, so, how it's typically done is you have an application that comes before you. It's about setbacks, zero lot lines in whatever, whatever, the RM 100 district. You, you don't want zero lot lines in there. You want there to be a 25-foot setback. You think it's appropriate in this day and age that there be a 25-foot setback. This is a complete hypothetical, right? So, you, as a board, get this application and say, we think we need to make a recommended change. Okay, let's add that on to the agenda for the next meeting. We'll discuss that item and see about making a change. You add it on the agenda for the next meeting. You discuss it at the agenda for the next meeting. You say, okay, staff, we'd like to make this recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. We'd like to see this change to this ordinance done, and this is our reasoning why. Then, staff takes it to the city manager, the city manager presents it to the commission, and then they can choose whether or not they want to take that recommendation to make the change or not. Um, that's typically how it happens.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right now, you have a process to where you are revamping your entire code. Um, and so, these things are now going to be brought to you, instead of you generating the change, it'll be brought to you from, um, after lots of town hall meetings and things like that. It'll be brought to you one by one for the changes or the wholesale changes to the code. That is happening in a lot of communities that way too, so that you're not responsible for really redrafting code. You've got professionals who are planning professionals, who are land use professionals, who are bringing ideas to you, and then you can evaluate them based on your experiences of being a contractor or just residents of the City of Tarpon Springs. So, that typically is how an LPA would function. Um, there's usually not workshops, there's usually not, I mean, because LPAs are usually citizen boards.
So, obviously, I didn't share my question quite right, so...
I said I didn't understand it.
Right. So, would if it's not code-related changes in, in fact, so, a setback is a great example, because that's just a fact, that's a data line. Would if the board's concerns, and I'll only speak for myself, is process-related, in other words, how we're receiving or how staff is intaking and being presented to us, that we want to see a different delivery, specifically these massive development projects that we've expressed concern with time and time again, where we're getting hit with three ordinances at one point, and we have agreed, I'll just use my memory, that it simply is not a good process, and we would like to see the process changed, not the underlying data. I don't think we've got a bone to contend with on setbacks, that's not our specialty, but when we can obviously tell that the process itself is flawed, or maybe not appropriate for Tarpon Springs, how would we address that in a more correct manner?
You don't really have the power and authority to do that under the code. That's administrative. That's the power to, to handle administrative processes and procedures is governed by the city manager, the department head, staff. You're talking about, now, I say that with this caveat, if there's a process that's laid out in an ordinance that says, this is what you are to submit, this is what happens next, this is what happened, that, this is what happens after that, then sure, you have the ability to discuss that and make recommended changes to the Board of Commissioners. But if you're talking about, uh, you know, a department-level policy within the city, you don't have the ability to touch that at all. You can certainly make recommendations to staff, and they can take them back and do with them what they will, but that's not the power and duty of this board. Um, and that's not even the power and duty of the Board of Commissioners. You know, that, that's, they are a legislative body, they are, they don't deal with the day-to-day administration of the city. Um, so, that, that is a, an administrative function of the City of Tarpon Springs, and this, that's inappropriate for this board to, to really meddle in.
Just one question, kind, kind of being the devil's advocate on that one, though. If somebody brings us a huge development project and, and we, and it's got, you know, a, a annexation, a rezoning, a site plan, and variances all rolled into, to one thing, uh, we don't have the right to say, we don't want to hear this entire application in one meeting?
Well, first, you're never going to hear variances. This board doesn't do that. You're only going to hear the things that the code allows you to hear. So, site plan reviews, a lot of times, what I'm thinking you're talking about is when you get annexations, uh, changes to the future land use map, and rezonings all in one. And there's three ordinances, and it's a big project, and they're asking for all these things.
Well, where the, where the problem really has happened, I think, in the past is when it involves the site plan as well. So, there's really a ton of information.
I'm not so sure, and Pat can correct me, or Ally can correct me, I'm not so sure you see site plan reviews when you see annexations, land use changes, and zoning changes. I think those are, all come separately. There's, there are different parts of a process.
They do. For example, the ones you, you looked at tonight, those would, if they were moving forward, would have to come back to you as a site plan.
Yeah, they're separate, they're separate ordinances.
But, I mean, unless I'm mistaken, and I'm pretty certain, we, we have seen rezonings and, uh, site plans, particularly on large projects that...
It could be that, that he's referring to preliminary plan developments, which have a site layout. It's just not site plan level approval.
Right, they're, they're separate. So, a lot of those things have to travel together. You, you, there, it, it doesn't make sense for them not to travel together, um, especially if you're considering all of the same evidence in order to make a determination on three or four different things. It wouldn't make sense to have three or four different hearings. It's also the applicant's due process right to be heard, um, and be heard in a timely fashion. So, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't, I don't necessarily know that, I, I think staff does a fairly good job of not giving you too much on your agenda, but as far as with one application having three or four ordinances to consider for one specific project, I, I think that's just the nature of development. That's the nature of the beast. I've not seen it done anywhere else in any other community differently than that, mostly because then you would be having four hearings, four different months, with the same evidence being presented, but now you're just looking at different criteria for each, um, each presentation, I suppose.
So, yes, so, I, I would just encourage you, maybe go ahead and make your, your lists, email them to, to us individually, and, um, yeah, maybe we can flesh out which ones next time that you want to talk about.
Yeah, is that, yeah, we don't really need to get into what we're going to discuss at the workshop tonight.
And I'm sorry for leading us down that road, but since we had to have an ordinance to change the time from seven to 6:30.
Yeah, that was rules of procedure.
Well, those are, that's your rules of procedure.
And I did provide you a copy of your newly adopted rules of procedure. I, I suppose those are up, you know, if you want to, I don't know if those were something you were interested in talking about. At the workshop, I suppose you could bring something up if there's something that, you know, that, that Erica, or that, that, you know, is allowable to change, that you want to change. You could look at that, look at the code, and, um, go from there. And, and I did, by the way, give you the, um, comprehensive plan spreadsheets. I've got to add property rights element to that. I'll re, email you that. Um, I just sent you the email. It prints out on the big ledger paper, so I didn't print it, but we'll be glad to print it for anybody that would like a copy.
I'm going to ask you a real basic question. When, when you, when you say staff recommends, right, staff approves or recommends approval, who is staff? Is that, is there a panel of you, that you guys like vote on this?
Planning and zoning staff.
Is it just the planning director? Is it the city manager? Like, who, when you say that, who is that?
It's the, it's basically the planning director. And the planning director ba, bases, uh, her decision on all of that, the, the department staff, the TRC recommendations, um, you know, land development code compliance, comprehensive plan review, and gives a professional opinion as to whether a development, um, in her professional opinion, meets, meets those standards or not.
Okay.
It's, that is normally how it's done.
Normally.
Every jurisdiction in the state.
We know, we know of some, we know of some exception, don't we?
Yeah, we, I mean, we had one last month, right, where we didn't make a recommendation. Um, you know, that's rare. Really, you, you know, and, and you could, theoretically, you could do that for everything that comes in here. But your planning staff, in my opinion, should, should, should make a suggestion, a recommendation, should give you their honest opinion. I think that, that is the best course of action. I've always thought it was. Um, so, you know, I think that's, that's what you're kind of paying for, the planning staff.
Thank you.
So...
And not only that, but keep in mind that this board, when you're talking, well, most of the boards here, you're talking about a quasi-judicial or even a legislative decision. There are parties to the application. So, if an applicant comes before you, they are required to present the evidence to you. Staff's not required to, but the, the applicant is. Staff is here representing the city. You guys do not represent the city. You are an independent board. You are, you don't have the city's interest at heart, you don't have the applicant's interest at heart, you have your criteria that you are bound to, and you are here to act in your, sit in a judicial-type capacity, take in the evidence that's presented by both parties, reason it against the criteria that you've been given, and make a final, and make a decision, a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So, that's why staff is here, because they are here representing the city. You are not here representing the city. I'm not here representing the city. I'm representing you. I'm advising you. I don't always agree with what staff says, but I'm here to tell you, just to guide you in the right direction with, are you following the law or you're not following the law? But ultimately, you're here to make the decision based on the evidence, that's, evidence that's given to you.
Pat, do we have something that shows exactly like ABC of what the criteria of the planning and zoning board is?
Of the planning and zoning?
Like, you know, like a complete list of what our criteria that we're supposed to be following is?
Um, well, if you do, if you look at the, um, training series, there are a couple of slides that list your duties. And then, the second module goes through all the criteria that you use to review all of your applications.
Okay.
They're all different, so...
I just wanted to see if something was written that you look over and see.
Okay. All right.
All right. Was, did staff have any comments about anything else?
No.
Okay, so, we can move on. Did the board members have comments on anything else? No? Well, I guess in that case, we stand adjourned.
I thought we were off the clock.